Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. We are going to have our swearing in for our three newly elected council members. And I'll ask our city judge, Ewing Sellers, if his honor would come over and honor us by administering the oath of office to these three fine persons and their families. Make sure the families sign up, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, gentlemen. It's my pleasure to administer to you the oath of office. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. Do you solemnly swear -- I'm sorry. I do solemnly swear or firm
I do solemnly swear or firm.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
And that I will faithfully, zealously, and impartially
And that I will faithfully, zealously, and impartially
discharge the duties of a member of the City Council of the City of Murfreesboro
Discharge the duties of a member of the City Council of Murfreesboro.
without fear or favor
Without fear or favor.
And for the public welfare.
And for the public welfare.
Congratulations, Councilman. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all. Good evening. Family members and members of the public who might also like to view this once again, or set your DVR, DVD-R, whatever else you've got, it will be televised again tomorrow night, Friday night, May the 4th, at 7:00 PM also. At this time, Mr. Doug Young, council member, has our prayer and pledge. Mr. Young?
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for our many blessings that you have given us. Thank you for this great community and great nation. We thank you for our city employees, our firefighters, our policemen, and all who serve us. Be with our servicemen and women all over the world who put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe. Bless this council and the decisions that we make. Keep in our minds and hearts that we are servants of each other and servants of thee. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, May 3rd, 2012. Council members who were re-elected, I welcome you back. And congratulations, and congratulations to your families and supporters. And Mr. Smotherman, newly elected, congratulations. And we look forward to working with you. And it's an excellent opportunity, and we're very happy to have you on the council. And we're glad you're here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our first order of business tonight, it will be the election of the vice mayor. And I would open up the floor for nominations to vice mayor.
Mayor Bragg and council members, I'd like to nominate Mr. Ron Washington to be our new vice mayor.
Second, Pat.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are you prepared to vote on the motion? All right. Please call the roll. Motion and second.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Washington. In the spirit of fruit basket turnover, I would like to ask us to realign our seating order tonight. And Mr. Smotherman, I'm gonna let you have Mr. Gilly's seat. He has warmed it so long that he's tired of it. And I'm gonna ask him to come down here and sit next to me. And Ms. Harris, and Mr. Washington, I'm gonna leave you right where you are, where I can get my hands on you at all times.
Aye, sir.
And I appreciate y'all doing that.
You have been dismissed.
Thank you. Just stack it up. Is that all, Ed?
It is.
All right. I have your many minutes of faithful service.
Let me go ahead.
Here we go.
How you doin', ma'am?
At this time, you have before you the consent agenda. If you have had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any questions regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? And if not, is there a motion to approve it as it has been presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, before we go into our rest of our agenda, I'd like to order that the certification of election from the County Election Commission and the oath of office, which has been administered by Judge Ewing Sellers to the City Council members, be spread on the minutes of this meeting, May the 3rd of 2012. I shall note that the certification and the election summary report were received today. It is here, and I ask that it be spread on the minutes. If you will, make a motion to do so.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say one.
You can't second, too.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, you have the minutes of the April 19th, 2012, regular meeting before you. Are there any additions or deletions to those minutes as they have been presented? If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes of the April 19th, 2012, meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to rezone an area located along Kimbrough Road to residential single-family eight, R.S. 8 district, and residential multifamily 16, R.M. 16 district.
Move for the passage on second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to rezone an area located along Warrior Drive to Highway Commercial, C.H. district.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage again on second reading and ordinance to rezone an area located along South Church Street to Commercial Fringe, C.F. district.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board regarding engineering design services for a new headworks facility at Sinking Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, Contract 4C, and adopt a resolution regarding financing of the construction of wastewater facilities projects through the State of Tennessee Clean Water State Revolving Loan Program. Welcome, Mr. Kirchner, like your tie.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, two items. The first is engineering design services. Back in 2009, we entered into a contract with Smith, Sebman, Reed to design new headworks facilities. Shortly after that, in 2010, we suspended the design of that while we did about a year's study in looking at different ways that we might look at satellite plants and things like that. And at the end of that review, we came to the conclusion that is the most economical thing to do is to proceed with the expansion of the existing plant as it is for right now. The first step in that's gonna be the new headworks facility. There's some work that was done prior to the suspension that is work that is needed for the current project. There was some other work that Ms. Smith, Sebman Reed did for us during that period of time, looking at different options. And also, our NPDS permit was looking at adding phosphorus removal options to our plant. So we had to kinda incorporate that into the layout of the plant and have to look at that in order to lay out the different components that was necessary. That was about $95,000 worth of work. What we ask for tonight is that you would approve of another task order in its -- the task order that would revise the new work order total to $563,739.52, where the original cost of work was $691,250, of which $127,510 has already been done. The other $95,000 will be our miscellaneous engineering services that they do for us from time to time on different water resources projects. This would be funded by the state revolving loan the upcoming -- which is part of the next item.
Any questions for Mr. Kirchner?
Mayor, if there are no questions, I would move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and second to approve this recommendation for engineering design services. Are there any questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
The next item is to a recommendation to approve Resolution 12 R-05. This is regarding future rates. And first thing, I need to make it perfectly clear that tonight, you're not approving rate increases. What we have to do is when we make application to state revolving loan for $37 million, looking for these projects that we're going to be doing, is they require us to say that we're gonna meet our obligation for the debt service and set user rates that will support the debt service and the different ratios they have. We have to keep a debt service ratio of 1.2 or greater, which is also currently under our bond covenants. So it's much the same as that. And what this does is gives the state revolving loan staff the roadmap, if you will, for what we're gonna have to do in the future to look at our five-year capital plan of about $70 million. We made some conservative estimates. It's over a five-year period. It could be seven years. It could be four years. It just depends on as we get things started and we'll be able to start and stop projects and get those completed. It may be less or it may be more when you start looking at the revenue. I think it's gonna be less, but like I said, we are conservative in our estimates. And we need to show the state through this resolution that we will meet our obligation to have sufficient funds to pay for our loans that we will be receiving. The total loan project cost is $37 million. The loan amount, although it'll say $37 million, 2.4 million of this is free money. They will give us principal forgiveness on $10 million of $2 million. And then we get another $400,000 off another unsubsidized loan that they have. So, you know, we're gonna be gaining $2.4 million without any cost. The other thing is that this is very low-interest loans. It's 60% of the bond market index. And right now, we're probably talking 2% or less in the funds that we would get. The previous loans that we received, there were 4% or so, 4.5%. So now's the time to borrow this money at a fixed rate over a 20-year period is what we're looking at. All you're authorizing tonight is this resolution that would allow us to send us to the state that you'll see that, okay, you're committed in what you're going to do. You'll evaluate it each year, as we always do with our budget, is what our rates need to be to meet our revenue requirement, and you'll make your rate adjustments as you need to. And that at the end of the projects that we have, which are anticipated for two years, with the $37 million, two years, we'll need to have in place the user fees that will cover that indebtedness in the ratios that we need to cover. This will all come back to you. We will have the application and the agreement for the loans. We will be back with you in our budget process with recommendations on the rates. Since 2008, we've been reducing the minimum allowance in our minimum billing by 50 cubic feet, and we will continue to do that this year and next year. And then after that, we'll reevaluate what our cost will be to cover the indebtedness. And right now, that's estimated at 6%, possibly increased. But like I said, right now, these are -- we have to do projections five years out to make sure that we're gonna be adequately funding, because you can get behind real quick if you don't keep up with these things. But tonight, we'd ask you to -- this Resolution 12 R-05, so that we can make application for these funds. We're prepared tonight to give you a short presentation on our capital improvement plan and some of the -- I think some of the questions that some of the council members may have had today as resulting from the recent news article. But I'll be happy to answer questions. Our Darren Gore will assist me and give you a short PowerPoint presentation, about six or eight slides.
Any questions for Mr. Kirchner regarding this resolution? Any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this resolution?
Understanding that we are in very difficult economic times, I think, and I hate to see the rates increase on the customers. Will we be required to take the full amount that we're asking for if indeed later on we decide that we don't need quite that much, or if we can find some in some reserves or somewhere?
Every year, we look at what -- number one, we can't use reserve to pay for debt, other than paying off a loan. You can't use it on a debt service, if you will. It's not counted. And so we have to -- the state wants you to have your user rates, which is money that you get from the service that you provide. There's other revenue that we have from our connection fees and things of that that's not -- it's not recurring, because just like we had, we were doing really well with our connection fees while the economy was great, and now it's stopped. But it's still substantial that we get that revenue in, but that's not recurring and can't be counted on. The thing they look at is our user fee for the debt service. Now, we use the monies that we have on hand to fund projects, the smaller projects. And smaller, I'm meaning million to $4 million that we've done several in the past, and we probably completed about $40 million worth of projects in the last 15 years in expanding the system and upgrading and replacing old infrastructure. But that we look -- we have a cost of service study done by a professional CPA firm that is the water and sewer industry standard of how you analyze to make sure you have fair and equitable rates for your customer classes, that one customer class is not paying more than the service that is being provided than another. And that we set those minimums. There's a point where you have to -- you have some -- you know, your fixed cost that before the first gallon of water's pumped, you have to cover those costs. So that's kinda where you want your minimum bill to be. And then after that, it's a commodity cost. It's how much per 100 cubic feet or 1,000 gallons you pay to do that. We're gradually getting to where our minimum bill amount is going to be that fixed amount and raising that slowly over time. You can't do that all at once. It would be too burdensome on the lower-end users and all. But they're the ones that are being subsidized the most by the ones that use more water. So we're trying to make it equitable for all.
And currently, the average is about $60 or so, $60 some odd dollars?
About 5,000 gallons a month. This is -- I think it's about 57, something like that.
So the average increase would be approximately $15 at the completion of the increase?
It -- that's at the end of five years.
Right.
You know, this next year, everyone will see $3.04
Okay.
On a bill. That's what this next year and the year after will be, $3.04 fixed. So if, you know, the percentages is greater on the less you use, and when you start getting up to the big industries, they don't see anything at all.
But it would not necessarily have to increase that much
Correct.
If revenue were generated over a five-year period that were greater than we expect.
Correct. We're looking at cost savings and looking at some refinancing, some bonds, and things like that that could reduce our revenue requirement. If we can reduce that revenue requirement, then we can reduce that rate. And right now, I anticipate it being less than 6 unless something just drastic happens.
Right.
But also, it's got to do with how much water we sell. You know, if we don't sell any more water than we normally do, then we're static. We stay. And if there's increased cost, then that would have to be a rate that would do that, to increase that. But if we stay status quo, then -- and we have pretty much in our water system, but our sewer system was growing the most. And it will -- we're looking at the fair and equitable cost on each component, not one subsidizing of it. Water pays for water. Sewer pays for sewer.
I think you broke that down to my level. Thank you. I understand. Other questions or comments? Mr. Gilly?
Joe, we don't take the full $37 million to sell them in time. It's done it like a line of credit where we draw off of it. Correct. And we're only starting to pay interest on the parts as we take. So we take what we need as we need it. This is just basically putting that like a line of credit that money's reserved for if we need it. Correct. We borrowed $55 million for the last wastewater project, wastewater plant expansion. And it's drawn down as we get the contractor's estimates in and pay him, then the state pays us, and then we can pay the contractor. So it's like a construction loan on a home. It's as you draw the principal, you pay interest on what you've drawn down until you draw all of it down. And then at the end, we would close our loan based on how much that we used. And right now, that's an estimate of 37. It could be less. It could be more. But like I said, I think we've estimated that pretty conservative, and we're looking at ways, doing some value engineering in all our work we do to make sure that we do it the most economical way.
The useful lifespan of this improvement will be how long?
Some of it will be 50 years. Some of it will be 20 years. Oh, mechanical equipment, maybe more, 15, 20 years, pumps and things like that. A force bank, you're probably talking, when you look at it from a CPA standpoint, it's 50 years. But we've got pipe in the ground that's 100 years old. So, you know, it's got a long age to it as far as pipe in the ground. The concrete have -- I think they use 50-year life for concrete structures.
I know we do consider debt and what -- but you have to think about public improvements generally have much longer lifespans than what you generally look into with your personal borrowing. I mean, when you build a school, you've got a probably 50, 60, maybe 70-year commitment to the physical plant. When you build a water and sewer department plant, you've got a long life ahead of you on something like that, so.
And we're doing some catching up on infrastructure. A lot of the articles now in the professional journals are showing that the water and sewer infrastructure is aged, and we're replacing now. You've seen a lot of our projects with line work. We're replacing lines that were put in 50 years or greater, replacing those as streets are improved and things like that. So we try to do a couple million dollars a year replacement to kinda keep up with that aging infrastructure. But these are the major components right now. The pump at pump station in O'Fort Park, the golf course, was built in the '70s. It was built on a farm. There wasn't anything around it. Now there's a golf course. There's a park. There's a mall. There's restaurants. So we're right smack dab in the middle of an urban area. And this would eliminate the nuisance of that station and make it a lot more reliable, bringing it to the newer technology.
Other questions regarding this resolution? If not, are you ready for a motion?
Mayor, if there are no questions, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and second. Thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. This time, we'll consider any beer permit applications. Ms. Wright? Oh, I skipped number 10, didn't I? Consider recommendations of the chief of police with regards -- and I'm not gonna be voting on number 10. I'm gonna abstain, as my son-in-law is the contractor. So at this time, we'll consider the recommendations of the chief of police with regards to quotes for the renovation of the sergeant's office in the uniform building at 308 South Church Street. Chief, forgive me and welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. This is a very small item, but we appreciate the opportunity to bring it to you. You may remember, we promoted a number of patrol sergeants last year. The existing office facility that they have is limited space, and what we're asking to do here is to approve an addition to that space to be funded from operation and maintenance of buildings. We did ask for three quotes on that. The low quote came in from the Abbey Group at $9,985. That is well within the remaining budget in that line item, and we respectfully submit that for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief regarding this recommendation?
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Second. All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Will abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Got to think, gotta think, hold it there. It's hard voting last. But Mr. Gilly, I don't wanna vote first.
I was just to send him. And Ms. Gels Harris, it's gonna take some getting used to being the first in the line of fire.
That's right. All right. Now, do we have any beer permit applications?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have a special event application from the chamber. The first location on that event is actually replacing a previous event that they had already brought to you, and that application is in order. We also have two applications for the two O'Charlies here in town. They are actually going through a corporate restructuring. This will not be something that will really be noticeable to the public, but because of the ownership change, they are required to get a new beer permit. We are trying to assist them in that matter by bringing it to council now. It's one of those that they can't always tell you everything until it's ready to happen, and so the notice is sort of short. They are having their building inspections done currently. I've gotten half of the background checks back. I don't plan to do anything if there's a problem with the other half of the background check, but I would like to ask permission to issue this permit once everything has come back if it is in order.
All right. Any questions regarding these beer permit applications? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. The --
Pass.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have before you a list of the statements to be considered for payment, are there any questions regarding any of those bills? And if not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Move that we pay the bills.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Is there any other business from the staff or from city council?
Mayor, I believe there is one item.
Mr. Ives, welcome, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor tonight to play Mr. Sam Huddleston on TV. We bring you an item about abandoning an easement, and there's a, I believe a memo has been passed around to you from Sam, and he was not able to be here. This, if I could have the overhead, please. There is a drainage easement behind the homes that front Titan Circle that is between Whitechek Court and Shade Court. The homes that front Titan Circle were part of Villages of Savannah Ridge Phase 1. At that time, the plan was to put a 20-foot wide drainage easement, 10-foot on those lots facing Titan's Circle, or Titan, yeah, Titan Circle, excuse me, and 10-foot on the lots behind those. By the time they got to Phase 3, which is where the lots are that are behind the lots facing Titan Circle, the drainage plan had changed. The plat for Phase 1, which includes lot numbers 17 through 22 of Phase 1, there's a recorded drainage easement on those lots, 10-foot at the rear of the lot. Lots 87, 97, 98, 99, 10130, which are the lots behind those lots that face Titan Circle, they're in Phase 3. There is no drainage easement on those lots. However, there are, with the notes that are on the first plat, there's some indication that there might be drainage rights on them. This has come to our attention when people have wanted to put in, build a fence or something of that nature, found that they were in a drainage easement, would then have to get special permission or an exemption. And we have confirmed with the design engineer and our staff engineers have looked at this and see that there's no need to retain this drainage easement. So what we're proposing is to abandon the drainage easement across all of those properties. Planning Commission considered this last night and did recommend it unanimously. We ask your approval. We don't have the legal description, so we don't have a deed prepared yet, but for your approval to take this action, subject to preparing a deed by the city attorney's office and then have it executed by the mayor and recorder. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
All right, any questions for Mr. Ives regarding this drainage easement abandonment? If there are no questions, are you ready for a motion to approve this abandonment?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly, Mr. Young. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. Any other business?
None I'm aware of, Mayor.
All right. I will tell the council that I have your wish lists, the dream sheets for board and commission appointments, and I will try to get those to you so you'll have time to consider them before our next meeting, so you'll have an opportunity to jawbone or, you know, make offers of meals or things that you want to pay the mayor to get you where you want to be. But I do appreciate all of you turning those in very promptly, and I'll try to comply with the wishes that you have. We certainly respect and appreciate the board and commission service that you give and all of those people who work on our city boards and commissions. And again, Mr. Smotherman, welcome. You've had a good start tonight, and I wish you well throughout your career in politics. Now you're a politician.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? If not, we adjourned.